Good evening, everyone.
Don't anybody socially distant air kisses only no crowds isolate and get vaccinated.
I bet air kisses was the hardest one for you or all of them.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to you too, Bernard.
Thank you, everyone.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Dr. Haynes, I'm glad to see you wearing a tie, so I'm not the only crazy one wearing a tie.
Dress for the occasion. Thank you.
I just removed mine, too.
I was debating, I'm like, I hate ties, but I probably should wear one.
Hey, everybody.
Ricardo. Ricardo, how are you?
Good, good, good.
I hope everybody's feeling well.
Everybody's good now.
Yep, now, yeah. Still waiting for these crazy COVID tests, though. My job required one before we even back, and I did it on Monday, and we still haven't gotten the results. So now they're like, well, come in anyway. It's like, well, what's the point in making us go and do the test then?
Looks like we have about thirty-six participants.
Evening, everybody.
Hey.
Good evening.
Mr. Cathcart, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you feeling?
Pretty good.
Good.
Pretty good. Doesn't look like I'm gonna die from COVID, so.
What, Ricardo?
It appears that I'm not going to die from COVID, so it'll be something else.
I had a rapid test was negative. I had a PCR said was positive, and I had no symptoms.
Dr. Haynes, don't worry, I'm allowed to disclose my own medical information.
I know. I just, yeah, makes me a little uneasy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I think we're missing our new board.
Damn rookies probably can't figure it out.
It's amateur night in here.
Mary.
Yes, hello.
Thank you for the coffee cup. It's great.
You're very welcome.
That's right. Yes, thank you, Mary. Appreciate it very much.
Nice and big, yes.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for the chocolates. I believe the new board members there in the public as attendees.
Oh, there's one.
Yeah, they're there. They're both there.
Nice.
They're in, so I guess they're going to be promoted at in a little bit.
I get kicked out.
Can we have eleven board members? How about eleven? Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
How are you?
I am hanging in there. Hanging in there.
Welcome, Diane.
Hello.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hear me? Yes.
Yes, Carrie.
Yes, yes, we can.
Can't see Diane yet.
I'm here.
Here.
Diane McNeil, right here.
You have my webcam.
Wait, the Hollywood Squares just changed.
I did see this meme that said, how did the Brady Bunch have Zoom thirty years ago?
Way ahead of their time.
Way ahead of their time, yeah.
What are we waiting for?
I need just a minute, you know, I.
I think, I think Carrie's, Carrie's gonna accept, Carrie is in person.
All right, we're ready to begin. Welcome to the 2022 reorganization meeting of the Ridgefield Park Board of Education. I am going to take a roll call of the existing board now. Mr. Cathcart.
I'm here.
Mr. Fernandez.
Here.
Mr. Phytros. Mr. Gibbons.
Here.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Dr. Martinez.
Here.
Mrs. O'Neill.
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Thiemann. And Mr. Vaselli.
Yeah.
I just reached out to trustee Phytros as well.
Okay, I'd like for us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic.
I'm going to read the Open Public Meetings Act. Reorganization meeting of the Board of Education of the Ridgefield Park County of Bergen was advertised to be held at the junior senior high school, Ridgefield Park, New Jersey on the above date, January 5th, 2022. Following additional information was posted by Legal Ad on January 5th, 2022, and on the district website in light of the increase in the number of COVID cases reported. Members of the board will be fully remote for this meeting, but for, but the public will have an opportunity to view and participate in the Zoom meeting in person from the Ridgefield Park Junior Senior High School. The New Jersey Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the positions of the provisions of the act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education has caused notice of the meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Bergen Record Municipal Building Board of Education Offices and District Website. All public will be muted through the meeting. Public participation will be conducted through in-person and virtually through Zoom. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually or telephonically via Zoom. Via Zoom and be seen by the board and via Zoom, individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the hand icon at the bottom of the Zoom window. Individuals participating by telephone that wish to make comments during during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The Business Administrator Board Secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order their hand was raised. I would like to now read the election results. Proceedings of the district of election of Ridgefield Park, Bergen County, held on November 2nd, 2021, pursuant to notice given in accordance with school law, annual election results held on November 2nd, 2021. Ricardo Martinez, Diane McNeil, and Michelle Orth were elected for a three-year term each. The votes were as follows: Ricardo Martinez, the vote was 1,556. Diane McNeil, the vote was 1,362. Michelle Orth, the vote was 1,321. I now will have the pleasure of swearing in the new board members. So what I would like you to do, I believe that you have a copy of the oath that was sent to you in your packets, and I'm going to swear you in collectively. So please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and the state.
And to the government established in the United States and the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So, so help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Diane McNeil.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all of the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome to the Ridgefield Park Board of Education.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mrs. Grabstein.
You're welcome.
Trustee McNeil, trustee Orth, and Dr. Martinez, congratulations on your, on your nominations.
Thank you.
You're here.
Mr. Phytros is not here, but I did want to mention that the reorg meeting, the little ferry reorg meeting, is tomorrow. So he is technically a seated Board of Education member for Ridgefield Park until, until such time that, is he here?
He is.
He's in the dark.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my connection.
Your name, I didn't hear you say, okay.
No, it's all right, no problem.
I just wanted to say that you, your reorg meeting is tomorrow, and at that time, we will find out who is the rep for the 2022 year. But in the meantime, you are still seated on the Ridgefield Park Board of Education.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi. I'm going to now take a roll call of the new members of the Board of Education. Mr. Cathcart.
Present.
Mr. Fernandez.
Here.
Mr. Phytros.
Here.
Mr. Gibbons.
Here.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Mrs. McNeil.
Here.
Dr. Martinez.
Here.
Mrs. Orth.
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Here.
And Mr. Vaselli.
Here.
All present.
Mary, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Good job, Mary.
Thank you. Appreciate everything you did.
Come back and visit.
You, Mary.
I will definitely be back to visit.
Hi.
Can I get moved over now?
We can move on, Nancy, to, I believe, to no, we have, we have to take them. I'm sorry. Okay, we also have to take the okay, we also have to, to take a vote. Okay, at this point, I would like to propose that we waive policy 152, which requires us to take a vote for president by ballot, and that we follow past practice and take the vote in the same manner that the Business Administrator took the vote last year. One of the duties of the Boards, Board of Education is to elect a member of this board as its new president and another one as its vice president. I will accept nominations from the floor, no seconds are necessary, and a public vote will be taken. This process will be done for the president and the vice president. If there is more than one nomination for either position, when I call the role, each member will state the name of the member they wish to cast their vote for. The candidates with the most votes will be elected to office. Majority of the full board is not required, only a plurality vote is needed. Can I have a motion?
Before you do that, are you taking a motion for the waiver of policy 152?
I guess I do need a motion for that to accept that policy. Okay, can I have a motion to accept policy, what, a waiver of policy 152?
I make a motion to waiver.
I'm sorry?
I said I make the motion to waive the policy 152.
Do I have a second?
Second, Karen, second.
Okay. Mr. Cathcart.
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Phytros.
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil.
Yes.
Dr. Martinez. Dr. Martinez.
Baby's built.
I think you're muted.
He froze.
Oh, he froze. Okay, I'll come back to him. Mrs. Orth.
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Vaselli.
Yes.
And Dr. Martinez. Maybe he's dialing back in. Well, we can waive the policy because the resolution passed.
Absolutely, we have to wait. I'll
Do we have to wait? Okay.
Well, for the next
Okay, here he is.
Oh, good, good.
Dr. Martinez, your vote for waiving policy 152?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes, and I'm gonna open nominations for president of the Ridgefield Park Board of Education. Seconds are not needed.
I would like
Nominate George, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, trust me, Vaselli.
I nominate George Fernandez.
George Fernandez, okay.
I would like to nominate Ricardo Martinez.
I would like to nominate Belinda Rodriguez.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, close the nominations and we will take the vote. Mr. Cathcart.
Mr. Fernandez.
Mr. Fernandez.
I shovel for myself?
Sure. Mr. Phytros.
Mr. Fernandez.
Mr. Gibbons.
Mr. Fernandez.
Mr. Gomes.
Mr. Fernandez.
Mrs. McNeil.
Dr. Martinez.
Dr. Martinez.
I'd like to vote for the honorable Ricardo Martinez.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for yourself?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth.
I'll vote for Dr. Martinez as well.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
I'll vote for Dr. Martinez.
And Mr.
George Fernandez.
Okay, the vote is six votes for Mr. Fernandez and four votes for Dr. Martinez, so Mr. Fernandez is officially elected as to the office of president of the Ridgefield Park Board of Education. Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, George.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And good luck.
At this time, Mr. Fernandez, I can turn the nominations over for vice president to you, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mrs. Grabstein. I just, at this time, I would like to nominate Dave Cathcart for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Belinda Rodriguez as vice president.
There any other nominations for vice president? Okay, we'll close the nominations for vice president, and I will take the vote. Mr. Cathcart.
I vote for me.
Mr. Fernandez.
I vote for the honorable Mr. Cathcart, please.
You got that right.
Mr. Phytros.
Mr. Cathcart, please.
Mr. Gibbons.
Trustee Cathcart.
Mr. Gomes.
Sorry, Mr. Cathcart.
Mrs. McNeil. Mrs. McNeil, I think you're muted.
Mr. Cathcart.
Dr. Martinez.
I'm gonna vote for Mr. Cathcart as well.
Mrs. Orth.
I'm Mr. Cathcart.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Mr. Cathcart.
And Mr. Vaselli.
David Cathcart.
Okay, Mr. Cathcart is not, is elected as vice president of the Ridgefield Park Board of Education with a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mr. Cathcart.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, I think now we have public participation. Is there any? Okay. Okay.
Are we, are we sure that it's open?
I'm sorry.
Are we sure that it's open for hand raising?
Yes.
You're already on to that. Don't we have to move the agenda first? Yes, that's what
I thought that was first, we're first supposed to be going to the on-agenda items, right?
Yes, you're right. You're right.
Yes, Miss Grabstein, can we, please proceed with all our public comments, please?
Do we have somebody, Nancy? I don't know who that is.
It's Susan DeSantis.
Oh, it's, who is it?
Susan DeSantis.
Mrs. DeSantis?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Mrs. DeSantis, can you just please state your address?
Is this on agenda or off agenda?
This is on agenda.
Okay, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. I don't see that person.
Do we have any more attendees that would like to, for any public comment?
Nope, it looks like we had somebody, but there, it disappeared. One more, okay. Dr. Mercedes Haynes, can you please state your address?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. My name is Dr. Mercedes Haynes. I'm at 206 Christie Street. And I would just like to give a shout out to my fellow colleagues on board of ED. It is a very difficult job that you do. I know you try your best in trying to help the children of Ridgefield Park, and I hope that continues with our English language learners, majority in our view at the present time. A shout out to Mr. Ricardo Martinez. I was hoping, Ricardo, that you would be the board president, but I'll get to know Mr. George Fernandez as well. And I know he'll continue the work. And to my fellow board members, just remember why you're there and your purpose for being there. It's all about the kids. That's the bottom line. It's all about the kids. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I look forward to meeting you too, Ms.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes.
Okay. Ms. Gillian Mark.
Yes, Gillian Mark, 305 Fifth Street. I would just like to welcome the new board members. I'm so glad to see more women on the board. We needed that. I'm a little disappointed that we are still stuck in this men as president and vice president. I would like to see that change. We desperately need that change. We need to get rid of some of this dead weight that we have on the board, so I'm hoping you women can change that and come in with your new ideas and look out for our children, which has been lacking the past year or two. And I believe with the new addition and with Belinda and with Dr. Martinez, we can move forward and really focus on our children and get back to the base level of what the Board of Education is there for. So, congrats. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. John Raftery. Mr. Raftery. See there? Okay. Just bear with us. Good evening, Mr. Raftery. Can you please state your address for me?
54 Euclid Avenue, Ridgefield Park, New Jersey. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. I'd like to welcome the new board members. We obviously need a lot of change in our Board of Education and the people looking for open honesty and transparency, something that has certainly been lacking. So, good luck.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Okay, so that's the close of the on agenda items. Mr. Fernandez, would you like to take a motion and a second for the consent agenda?
Thank you, Miss Grabstein. Yes, I would. Would anybody like to, I guess, a motion to move on to consent resolutions?
I'll second it, but are we tabling CR 29?
Yes, we are. We're
Yes, we are.
We're pulling those and we'll add them to the next agenda on the 19th. What we typically will do is vote for CR 10 to 26 as a block and then do CR 27 separately.
Okay, I'd like to move CR 10 to CR 26.
Second.
Are there any questions on CR 10 to CR 26? Seeing none, Mr. Cathcart.
Yes.
Mr. Fernand, now you know what, Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
And President Fernandez?
Yes.
Past practice for CR 27 is for each board member to read one of the sections of the Code of Ethics. So, Mr. Fernandez, we need a motion and a second for that resolution.
Thank you, Miss Grabstein. I'd like to I'd like to move CR 27 with the reading.
Second.
Is that Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll do a
Okay, perfect.
I will uphold and enforce the laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education. Court orders pertaining to the school desires changed shall be brought only through legal and ethical procedures.
Are you D, if you want?
Go ahead, Mr. Gomes.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will do C.
Go ahead, Mr. Verselli.
I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who be affected by them.
I'll do D. Excuse me, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well run.
I'll go with E, please. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
I'll do F. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest partisan politics or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I'll do G. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
I'll read H. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I could do I. That will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
I'll read J. I'm not sure if Mr. Phytros can read this at the time, at this moment, but I will refer all my complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of the administration solution. The board shall see that all members of the board receive training in understanding and adhering to this code of ethics and shall discuss it annually at a regularly scheduled public meeting. Each member shall sign documentation that he, she will receive a copy of it and read it and understand it.
Thank you. Are there any questions on CR 27? All right, seeing none. Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
And President Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to pull the next two resolutions on the consent agenda for the next board meeting, but we do have new business resolutions. Mr. Fernandez, would you like to ask for a motion and a second for the new resolutions, new business?
Yes, Miss Grabstein, I'd like to I'd like to move P 86.
I'll second it.
And I believe it's P 146?
I'll second that, too.
Are there any questions on P 86 or P 140? P 86 or P 146?
I have a question.
Okay.
On P 146, I'm not certain if there's any implications to the district on for this motion.
On 146? I'm happy to answer that. There are no implications. It's just the rescinding of a retirement because the retirement application was filled out incorrectly in Emboss, which is the online pension portal. So, there really is no difference to the district. It's just really a formality.
Miss Grabstein, if I'd like to add, I believe it's being treated as a leave of absence. This is worth.
But could the person decide to rescind their resignation altogether?
So, I can, I'll jump in here. The, I think Carrie doesn't want to divulge personal confidential information of the retiree. So, there are different types of retirement. This particular retirement, the individual, if it is not accepted and processed by the state, can request reinstatement. My suggestion is if you have any further questions, probably the best approach would be for us to go into executive session to discuss it. But the type of retirement an individual selects is completely up to their discretion and then it's processed by the state. So, if the state approves the retirement, there isn't really anything for the board to do. Can I make sure if that helps to? Executive session? If the board has further questions, we can answer them. I can help answer them in executive session if you'd like to go into executive session.
I mean, I think I need to understand what it is that I'm voting on. So, yes, I would prefer to so that I understand what I'm voting for.
I second. Carrie, I don't know if you have the, do we have the technology?
I don't think we have a link to go into executive session.
I think for executive, we didn't really count on having a link, having an executive session.
So, can we table it?
Is that, Carrie, can we do that? Table it for the next meeting?
I think you can because the application, the information you were obligated by law to submit has already been done, so it shouldn't hold up the process. But if the board has questions about approving the specific resolution, it probably can hold until the 18th or the 19th. Is your next?
I'll make a motion. We table it. We table 146 to the 18th.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Well, do the vote separately for resolution P 1.
Yes, of course. Yes, I'll both. So, right now, we'll just move P 1, P 86, correct?
Right now, it's P, is it 1, it's 86?
Technically, you need to now make a, so there's a motion to table. There needs to be a second and then a vote on the motion to table.
All right, George, you seconded, so we need to take a motion, a motion to table, a vote.
I'll make that motion. Oh, they made that motion already. They've made the motion already.
Okay, I thought we had Mr. Cathcart making a motion to table and Mr. Gomes seconding it. And now, Carrie, I can take a vote to table it?
Yeah, you can call the, you can call the roll now.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
And President Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, motion is tabled.
So, now you can go back to the original motion to pass, I think, the other new business agenda.
Now, we need a motion to move P 86.
Yep.
The second.
No problem. I'd like to move P 86, please.
And I'll second it.
Are there any questions on resolution P 86? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
And President Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Do we move to citizens' comments and off agenda items?
I believe that at this point, we have an ethics presentation by the board attorney.
So, there's no skipping your ethics training. Sorry about that.
We need it.
Carrie, I think is going to help me. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you. I understand that this is, this may be the only thing standing between you and the fastest board meeting that you've ever had since I've been your board attorney. But it's really an important topic. It's important for board members to understand that you're governed by two specific provisions. The School Ethics Act is comprised of the Code of Ethics, which is what the board members, what you each just read out loud. But there's also the School Ethics Act, which provides mostly for provisions related to conflicts of interest. The School Ethics Commission is the agency designated to hear complaints that board members may have violated the School Ethics Act. By the way, this also applies to school officials. So, Ms. Grabstein and Dr. Haynes also are governed by the School Ethics Act. Thank you very much. The School Ethics Commission hears both potential complaints, which can be filed by any member of the public. It can be filed by board members. It can also be filed by the board designating an individual to file School Ethics Act complaints. The other thing that the School Ethics Commission does is the School Ethics Commission provides advisory opinions. So, in all the things that we're going to talk about in the next few minutes, if there's ever a concern at any board members, many of you over the past have come to me to ask questions as far as whether you're permitted to vote on a specific topic, whether something would present a conflict of interest or whether you're engaging in certain actions might violate the Code of Ethics or the School Ethics Act. So, my office can provide some resource and guidance, but there are occasions where the answer is not black and white and we may recommend that you seek an advisory opinion, which we've done on a couple of occasions. And that advisory opinion is one that you would seek from the School Ethics Commission. And that advisory opinion is one that you would seek from the School Ethics Commission, and the School Ethics Commission would give you, as the name suggests, an advisory opinion. They will write out an answer to the question of whether there exists a conflict of interest based on the scenario that we lay out for them, or if there might be a violation if a board member engages in this or that conduct. Board members are not permitted to ask for advisory opinions for other people's actions. The advisory opinion process is if you have a question about your actions, if you are concerned that you might have a conflict of interest or that you need to recuse yourself from a certain action, then you can go to the School Ethics Commission and ask them based on the specific facts of your circumstance. At that time, you need to let them know that you've not yet engaged in that conduct, but you are looking in advance for guidance from the School Ethics Commission. And they can provide you, believe me, it takes a little bit of time, so you want to be cognizant of that, it's not an overnight answer that you get from them. But I want to go through, Carrie, if you wouldn't mind advancing to the, yeah, that's just a roadmap of what we're going to cover quickly today. The next slide, and then next one. Thanks. Okay, so this starts the School Ethics Act. The School Ethics Act, separate from the Code of Ethics, is mostly the conflicts of interest piece. So the first piece here, A, is that no school official or member of his immediate family shall act, shall have an interest in a business organization or engage in any business transaction or professional activity, which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties. This really covers specifically if you have an ownership interest or some financial interest in a business organization or an entity that may be doing business with the Board of Education. So if you work with an entity that might be providing services to the board, that is something that could violate the School Ethics Act. It also may be if the services are being provided free of charge or pro bono to the school district or to students or staff in the school district. And you are providing services or are working for that entity, that may also violate the School Ethics Act. So it does not necessarily mean that the school is paying for something, right? That's the traditional thing that we think of, is that if you have an ownership interest in a company and that company wants a contract from the Board of Education, and that company is then going to receive monies from the Board of Education, that's sort of the easy, low-hanging fruit of the School Ethics Act, but it may also be other things as well. I should, I should just point out at this point in time that if any board members have any questions as I'm going through the different provisions, do not hesitate to shout out and to ask, this is your opportunity. But it's not your only opportunity to ask me if you have any questions. Section B of the School Ethics Act is that no school official shall use or attempt to use his official position to secure unwarranted privileges or advance, advantage, advantages or employment for himself, members of his immediate family, or others. So unwarranted privileges is a little bit of what it sounds like. If someone is not otherwise entitled and you are pushing as a board member for that individual to get something they're not otherwise entitled to, that may be a violation of the School Ethics Act. The thing I want to point out here is the others. Right, members of your immediate family or yourself, it's pretty easy to identify. But over the years, the School Ethics Commission has redefined what others mean. My recommendation is that if you have someone that you are close to, if they would be loosely defined as a member of your family, extended family or otherwise, that you look carefully at this provision. If you need it to be, if you have a question about it or you have a need for it to be reviewed as far as whether there really is a conflict here, we can review that for you. But the others is broader, it could be a cousin, it could be sister or sister-in-law. The definition is broader than immediate family. Carrie, would you mind moving to the next slide for me, please? Thank you.
Carrie, can I ask?
Sure.
Could that be a, a very close friend that you don't have any financial ties with, but is a very, very good friend?
So technically, under the School Ethics Act, it probably would not meet the definition of others because they've really limited it, even though they've made it more broad. They've limited it to those that have some sort of a familial relationship. However, out of an abundance of caution and out of the appearance of a conflict. So some of these things talk about a definitive, absolute financial connection. Others talk about what the public may perceive if there is action taken. And so that is part of what board members, as board members, you also need to take into consideration, which is if this is your best friend for your entire life, you live next door to them, even if you don't have that financial connection, you may want to consider recusing yourself from a specific vote on that individual. It may not be a direct violation of the School Ethics Act, but it may be perceived by members of the public to be bestowing an unwarranted privilege on someone that you are very friendly with. So that's a good question, thank you for that.
Thank you.
The, so section C talks about no school official in your official capacity can have a direct or indirect financial involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair your objectivity or independence of judgment. Again, this relates in large part to what we were just talking about, which is that financial, now it can be direct or indirect financial involvement, but any financial involvement that could be expected to impair your objectivity as a board member or your independent judgment could violate the School Ethics Act. Section D, thanks, Carrie. No school official shall undertake any employment or service, whether compensated or not, which might reasonably be expect, expected to prejudice his independence of judgment in the exercise of his duty. This goes right along with it to, right, undertaking any employment or service, whether compensated or not. So part of what you need to consider is whether volunteering for an organization. If that might reasonably be expected to prejudice your independence of judgment as you sit on the board, then that may be a violation of the School Ethics Act. Some of these things are very much black and white, and others are very much in the gray area. So again, if you've got any questions about something you are engaging in or about to engage in, or for new board members, having not had to consider this previously, if there is an organization you're involved with that may have some connection to the school, it's probably better that you reach out and let us talk about what that potential conflict may be so that you can make an informed decision before you, before you act. The next provision E is a long one. No school official or member of your immediate family or business organization in which you have an interest shall solicit or accept any gift, favor, loan, political contribution, service, promise of future employment, or any other thing of value. I highlighted the, the, the key phrases in each one of these provisions to allow that to sort of sink in and to sort of jump out at you. Really, this one talks about gifts, favors, loans, anything that could be seen, I mean, if I'm going to use the, the straightforward phraseology here, right? Anything that might look like someone is bribing you, that it might affect your independent judgment. It's something that you really need to think about before you accept that. One of the things specifically outlined is for vendors. So when the board goes to School Boards Association, to the conference down in Lenox City, whenever that might be back in person, vendors are required to have their, their hospitality suites or their lunches or their dinners open to any board members. So you will notice whether it's your, you know, food service vendor or your attorneys, your auditors, if they have a hospitality suite or a dinner, it cannot be limited solely to board members because that may be seen as a, a favor or, yes, exactly. So, so it's something just to be careful of if somebody is offering you something because of your role on the Board of Education. So with number F, moving right along. No school official shall use or allow to be used his public office or employment or any information not generally available to the members of the public, which he, he receives or requires in the course of and by reason of his office or employment for the purpose of securing financial gain for him or herself or any member of his or her immediate family or a business association. That really boils down to is making sure that the information that you're provided as a board member stays confidential, and it's not used to further any financial gain for yourself or your family members or a business in which you're associated. One of the things to keep in mind here in particular is the confidentiality of executive session. Any of the materials that you receive in executive session must remain confidential to the members of the board unless and until they are made publicly available through the proper course, right? So something is no longer confidential. Most of what you're going to talk about or information you're going to receive as board members in executive session may never become public. So personnel matters may never become public. Attorney-client privileged communications and advice, unless the board specifically acts to waive the attorney-client privilege will never become a, a subject of public, will never be privy to the public. So that's what F really addresses, the need for keeping confidential, the information that you receive. Next up is G. And also a long one, but no school official or business organization in which you have an interest shall represent any person or party other than the school board or the school district. The next couple of provisions for the School Ethics Act, and you, I'll provide you with a copy of this PowerPoint so that you can have them. But the next couple of provisions really apply to when as a board member, you may have a direct conflict with the board. So when does that normally come up? Well, that may come up if you have a child in the school district and that child perhaps has a 504 plan or has an IEP. And as a board member, you disagree with the child's study team decision or the 504 team's decision. You don't give up your legal rights to pursue those claims on behalf of your child, but there are very strict restrictions on what you are and are not permitted to do as far as lawsuits against the school district while you remain a sitting board member. So if there's any question about your role there, please don't hesitate to, to reach out. Let's see, moving forward. I, I'll, Carrie, if you can advance it to I. No elected member shall be prohibited from making an inquiry for information on behalf of a constituent. So that's a good one. If no fee, reward, or other thing of value is promised to, given to, or accepted by the member or the member of the family. So that means that if someone comes up to you at the grocery store, which they inevitably will, you are now prohibited from making an inquiry for information. But I want to connect this provision with the Code of Ethics that we just read as a board, and we'll get to that in a minute. And that is that those inquiries need to be funneled through the superintendent. As board members, you are not permitted to go directly to staff members to obtain information or discuss things with them. The only exception for that is if you are going to a staff member directly related to a child or a grandchild if you have in the district, you are permitted to speak to that child's teacher or the building principal about that particular child, what's going on in the classroom, but not anything related to the board. So certainly, if somebody comes to you and they asks you, they, they ask you to look into something, what you need to do is tell them that you're going to present that issue to the superintendent of schools, and the superintendent of schools will take action. Only when and if the superintendent of schools or the chain of command fails that individual, can you then present that to the board. J talks about nothing prohibits a school official or member of his immediate family from representing himself or others in negotiations or proceedings concerning his or their own interest. One of the specific cases is on behalf of a child with a 504 plan, and that you don't waive as a member of the board your right to advocate for your own child. The last one for the School Ethics Act is K, and that really doesn't apply. I don't believe there's any employees of School Boards Association on the board. So I'm going to skip over that and save you thirty seconds of time. Carrie, if you wouldn't mind moving us along to the Code of Ethics. Each one of you just read each one of these provisions. So I'm just going to highlight a few specific items that sometimes and most frequently come up with board members. And that C, I highlighted C for you. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. One of the important things to remember as a board member is that you have no power and no authority unless you are sitting at a board meeting like you are this evening, and you are taking action as one of ten board members on this Board of Ed. And when you're doing that, you are confining your action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. That, in order to fully explain that, I'm going to move on to the next page because the next page also has D, which I think D is fairly important to be read in conjunction with C. So a lot of times we get the question, well, what does that mean? That I have to confine my action to policymaking? The, what that really means when you look at D, D says, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. A lot of individuals refer to this as the micromanaging provision. So as board members, you are not entitled to micromanage how the district is run. Recently, I heard the analogy, and I think it's somewhat corny, but it's a good one, which is that if you think about the school district as a ship, the board decides where that ship is going. So you set the destination for where that ship is going, but your administration, your superintendent of schools is in charge of deciding how the ship gets to that ultimate destination. So what happens on the ship, how the crew is managed, and what route is taken to get to that ultimate destination. I warned you it was corny.
Carrie.
But that's, that is, that is a good way of looking at what your role as board members is. And that is really just to make sure that the board is well-run, and you do that by hiring a superintendent. You do that by passing policy and giving directions on how the school district should be run through policy.
Carrie, can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
Since you were on D, and I think this is one of the ones that we, we get into a lot, a lot of questions when people write the board, I automatically assume that we know everything that's being done on a day-to-day basis down in every classroom. And many times, it's the first time we're hearing about things. And I think, I don't think the general public understands that we don't do the day-to-day running of the school district. And it's a struggle to, you know, explain that.
Yeah, so hopefully, some of them are listening to this, the ethics training that you're getting, where I'm telling you very specifically, you are not to run the schools. But you're absolutely right. You, as board members, you will run into people. As, as many of you know, I'm on my own local board, I run into people, too. They think that you do know everything that's going on in the school. So, you know, it's important to have a good relationship with your superintendent and your superintendent to keep you apprised of important things that are going on in the school. So what's going on with COVID? Maybe there is something that is expected to be the talk of the town in terms of some incident that took place. So for the most part, your superintendent will keep you up to date so that you are not taken by surprise, but it is impossible for your superintendent to keep you up to date on everything that's going on. And people will expect that you know what's going on. The best approach is to tell them that your job as a board member is not to be in the classroom and not to micromanage the district, but that you listen to their concerns and you tell them that you're going to take their concerns to the superintendent and pass them along. But the other thing to recall, remember is that it's important to make sure that the public understands the chain of command, just as you are obligated to follow the chain of command, and your chain of command goes directly to the superintendent. And as a board member, really no place else. It is the superintendent, and that's it. But as a parent, your chain of command starts with the teacher, and then the building principal. and then the building principal, and then up the chain of command that way. So it's important to also remind the members of the public that you as a board member are obligated to let them know that they need to follow the chain of command. So good question. Thanks.
Carrie, if I could also ask some questions, kind of comment. You know, as I'm reading this, that also means that no district employee should ever fear a board member.
Correct. Oh, correct. So when you put your, when you have interactions with anyone, you don't shed your, and we'll talk in a few minutes about your First Amendment rights, your rights as a parent. You don't shed those, but you are always first and primarily a board member. And so whenever you have communications with any staff members, um, you need to remember that they will perceive you as a Board of Education member first and foremost before a parent, uh, or a member of the community.
Carrie, uh, sure. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm hearing correctly. So you're, you just said that your primary goal is to be a board member?
Oh, no. I'm sorry, your primary role. So when you have.
I'm sorry, your primary role, your primary role is your, your responsibility as a board member?
No, okay. No, no. So what I'm talking about is when you are having communications with staff members, you need to keep in mind that first and foremost, you're a board member. So they are going to see you as a board member. Even if you are a parent and you're attending an event as a parent, they're going to see you first as a board member. Um, the reason why I bring that up is really just to encourage you to remember that you never take off your board member hat. You haven't lost your right to advocate for your children as a parent and you haven't lost your First Amendment rights to make certain statements. But you have to remember that when you're in the community, when you're in the schools, whether you're volunteering or not, um, you're first and foremost a board member. And that is how staff members will see you. Does that, does that, uh, does that make sense, Berlinda?
Thank you for clarifying.
I, I, I just want, Carrie, I, I was going in a kind of different direction also that I, I know how employee, you know, district employees might view board members, but that this district employee should also know that because of the chain of command, the board only has one employee, which is a superintendent. And that we as board members have no special powers or authority in any of the buildings or in any relationship with, with, uh, with a board employee.
Um, I agree with you and fundamentally they should be aware of that. Uh, but from a practical standpoint, if a board member comes and speaks to them, they know that you're a board member. They will think they're, um, being spoken to by a board member. Um, so it's just, um, just important to keep that in mind.
So what is the chain of command for a board member who is a parent?
That's a great question, Berlinda. Thank you for asking that. The chain of command for a board member who is a parent, if you have a very specific parent issue, you are permitted to follow the chain of command the same way any other parent would. My recommendation though, is that you also let the superintendent know if you have a specific issue. So use your judgment. If it is something about, um, an absence of your, your child and, uh, you're trying to get, you know, homework assignments and you've got a concern about the teacher, um, your next step would be to follow that chain of command. Right? If you have a concern about your child's teacher, you can go to the building principal. Um, you may also want to just let the superintendent know that you've had a concern and that you're following the chain of command. Because most likely what will happen is you will present that issue to the building principal. And because you are a board member, that issue will immediately be escalated anyway to the superintendent. Uh, because of just concerns of dealing with a board member or upsetting a board member. But you also, as a parent, should still follow that same chain of commands that other parents follow. Excellent question. So.
Carrie, I, I have one question. When you mentioned the, the chain of command and our primary only contact is the superintendent, what about the business administrator? You know, when we are reviewing documents for a meeting, who do we address those questions to?
So if you have questions about the agenda or about, um, some of the financial issues, um, I think your superintendent and BA work very well together in most districts, even though, um, the School Ethics Act says it's the superintendent. Um, my understanding is the way that they work together is that you can address those questions directly to the business administrator. Um, you should copy the superintendent on those questions so the superintendent knows what your questions are and what information you need. Um, but there are, so when you have, as most districts do, you have a board secretary slash business administrator. So in her board secretary role, she reports directly to the board. But it's hard for most board members to really be able to navigate, well, where does the board secretary role begin? And, and, um, so for the most part, if you have questions about the agenda, if you'd like to see additional documents, um, but if it's going to go further than that, um, then it really should go through the superintendent.
So.
Thank you.
Just, um, just want to follow up. Um, so as a board member, if we have a question about anything on the agenda, what is, who do we contact? And what is the role and responsibility of the, of the board president?
So as board members, you have the right, um, to expect to be able to have information on the agenda. So if there's something that's being put on the agenda, you're, the business administrator and the superintendent work together to put that agenda together for you. Um, my understanding is they also have an agenda meeting that the fiscal monitor attends and the board president attends. So together they collectively put together the agenda. As an individual board member, you have a right to have the backup information. And if you have questions about the agenda, to have those questions answered before your board meeting, to the extent it's possible. Sometimes things come up, um, and you just can't get them answered in time. The role of the board president, if you've got questions directly related to the agenda, you don't have to cycle them through the board president to get your answers. You can go directly to the superintendent and the business administrator for that.
Okay.
Carrie, you can.
Um, and also, and, and also we do have a state monitor. Do we CC the state monitor and when do we CC the state monitor?
So my understanding is the state monitor has requested that board members copy him on all communications to, um, to staff members. If, um, so if you have questions for, about the agenda, about documents related to the agenda, about something that's going to be presented, uh, his request is that you copy him. Um, so if you send it to Carrie Grabstein and to, um, Dr. Haynes in order to get answers, uh, you would CC him as well.
And so I CC him as a parent?
I'm not sure he's going to like my answer, but as a parent, you have no obligation uh, to copy the fiscal monitor on communications if you've got a concern about something specifically as a parent. But as a board member, if you're asking questions, uh, then you should be copying him.
I'm joking. Thank you, Carrie.
And just a clarification, um, Carrie, you know, I, I would ask, they, they, board members can contact the president as well, uh, for information. You know, that happened in the agenda meeting as well, if they would like.
Certainly.
Um, usually before, you know, I, I would ask several days before so that it gave the superintendent enough time to get the answer if needed.
Absolutely. There is nothing that would stop you. Uh, and quite frankly, um, if it is something, um, that you think could be answered by the board president or the board president may have already gotten the answer. That's why I would recommend copying the board president at the very least, or going to the board president first. Um, because, you know, the, the BA and the superintendent are running your school district. So they have a lot of work to do. And to the extent that you can limit the number of inquiries that come to either of them because you can go to the board president, um, and get that answer answered, um, you should probably do that.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a very good point. And I should point out from, um, from a state law standpoint, the, um, board attorney is at the service of the board. So, uh, I work for the Board of Education, um, as the other attorneys in my firm. But, um, your policy as well as state law provides that the board president has direct access to the board attorney. And that anyone, any other board member, uh, who has a question that could be presented to the board attorney needs to per, uh, obtain permission from the board president in order to speak to the board attorney. That's not because it's some like exclusive club and, um, I don't want to speak to every board member. It's really, um, a fiscal issue. So it's in the accountability regulations that provide that there should be some restriction on who is permitted to, uh, contact the board attorney directly. Even staff members in the district, like building principals, uh, do not contact my office directly. They go to the superintendent who then on occasion will say, yep, you can go ahead and contact Carrie or David or one of the other legal team. Or he speaks to me directly about the issues. So there are those restrictions as well. All right. So going back to the, um, school ethics, uh, the Code of Ethics. Um, I'm going to skip to, let's see, G. I can scroll down. So G, um, again provides that the, uh, board members will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools. Um, this is another reminder that anything that's confidential needs to be maintained that way. If you have any question about whether information you've received is confidential, ask the superintendent or the board president and you'll get some information about that. Chances are if you're concerned that it's confidential, it probably is confidential. So you should err on the side of thinking something is confidential before sharing it with anyone else. Um, so you, since you already read these, I'm not going to read through all of them. Um, H is that you'll vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation to the chief school officer. So this goes back to the point that was made earlier that your appointment, uh, is the superintendent. The superintendent makes the appointments all the way down, uh, throughout the rest of the district. So you, when you see your agendas, you see that it is on the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education does not have authority to just hire people. You can only hire those individuals who are recommended to you by the chief school administrator. Um, I is that you'll support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. So that means you need to be careful if you speak out, um, against an individual. Maybe it's a teacher, maybe it's a principal. Uh, but you need to be careful with the statements that you make because you're obligated to support and protect the school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And then J is that you refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer. So that's your superintendent of schools. Any complaints that you receive need to be sent, um, to your superintendent of schools. You are not permitted to act on them without going to the superintendent. Um, Carrie, let's move on if you wouldn't mind quickly to the, wrap this up for everybody, but just a couple of points about the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, because sometimes these, um, sometimes this gets confusing. Um, the Open Public Meetings Act defines a meeting as any gathering uh, which is attended by or open to all the members of the public body. So that's a quorum for purposes of your board, that is six board members. Because your little fairy representative counts as part of the quorum. So why don't, why am I putting this in here when it comes to the Ethics Act? And that's because of the next slide, which is emails. Emails and text messages. Um, I always think of emails, the E in emails as standing for evidence. Um, also, um, the Open Public Records Act is something that the, I want to make sure all board members are aware of. Your emails, if they relate to board business, your emails, your text messages, your chats, your instant messaging, your social media posts, if they relate to board business, uh, they could and probably will be considered public records. So don't think because you're texting with another board member that those, um, texts may not be produced in either a lawsuit or requested in an Open Public Records Act request. Um, several board members have had to, to acknowledge if they have any text messages or personal emails about board business in response to open public records requests. Um, and if there is a quorum, so six board members uh, on an email, it could violate the Open Public Meetings Act. So how could you possibly violate the Open Public Meetings Act? Well, if you are engaging in an email exchange back and forth, that sounds a lot like a conversation, but it's happening electronically via email. Um, it could be considered a, a meeting for which you have excluded the public and that would be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So, uh, the next slide is just my recommendations for the board. Uh, that when practically your email communication should not include an effective majority of the board. And I will remind you, when you're counting up the people, don't forget to count yourself. Um, in the count, the headcount of how many people you're including on an email. Um, emails should be limited to providing information instead of engaging in discussion back, back and forth. Um, a good way to keep people from hitting reply all uh, is if you are sending out information to board members for informational purposes only, um, but for the board members in the BCC line so that nobody can accidentally reply all. Um, I will tell you what happens. I have had on a number of occasions, I had to remind various boards, um, that, um, hey, you know, you're, you're going back and forth and we really need, um, we need to stop this communication before it violates the Open Public Meetings Act. So just be careful with your emails. So that's a lesson there.
Very quick question.
Yep.
It's, it's a small town with, with many social gatherings. Uh, if we find ourselves in the presence of, uh, five other board members, say at a football game or local restaurants, something like that, like how do we make sure that, uh, we're not breaking this law?
Sure. The one, the easiest way to make sure you're not breaking this provision is if you find yourself in a gathering with an effective quorum of the board. So six members, you plus five others, don't discuss board business. That's the number one way to keep from violating the Open Public Meetings Act. Simply because you all attend an event. So if you all were to have attended, um, graduation or you all attend a football game, um, you're attending an event or being at the same restaurant does not violate the Open Public Meetings Act. It does if you start talking about board business, which if you don't have a personal relationship with other board members and your relationship is because you are board members, inevitably that's going to be your center of focus. So you'll start talking about board stuff. If, if that's the case, that's when you really need to be careful that you are not having that conversation with an effective quorum of the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Also just keep in mind that even if you aren't discussing board business, um, but there are a number of you together, maybe out to dinner. Um, you also have to, just to keep in mind what the public perception may be. So it's good to keep in mind that even if you know you're being disciplined and not discussing board business, members of the public who are seeing you all have dinner together, um, may think otherwise. And they may believe that they're being excluded from what is effectively a meeting of the board. So something to just keep in mind. Uh, the next, and really the last thing that I want to cover with you is something that, uh, is, is fairly important. And that's your First Amendment rights versus the School Ethics Act. Um, so, uh, the School Ethics, thanks Carrie. The School Ethics Act provides, I will recognize the authority addressed with the board. I will make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board. So issues that may concern the board, which is the next slide. If you are writing, whether it's on social media, whether it's a letter to the editor, and I understand that's sort of an archaic thing that most people don't do anymore, is write letters to the editor. But this is where the cases came from. So really now it's about Facebook, it's about your social media posts. Um, if you have a blog, um, if you are writing on a topic that is about the board and you are not the board president and you have not been identified by the board as being able to communicate on this topic to the public, you must do these four things. You must identify yourself as a board member. You must indicate that the post is not authorized by or written on behalf of the board. You must provide accurate information and that information cannot be confidential. And you have to ensure that your action does not compromise the board. So what does that look like? The next slide, um, take this, cop, copy and paste it. It's very verbose, but this is what the School Ethics Commission has recently just clarified. As far as what you must put in any post or Facebook page, if you are writing something that is a issue before the board, you are obligated to give this highly verbose disclaimer. It must be in writing, it must be provided in that post that you're writing. My recommendation is that if you post several times to your Facebook. My recommendation is that if you post several times to your Facebook page, consider not doing that, because as a board member, you could get yourself in some trouble. But if you do and you're careful about it, each one of your posts really should be followed by this disclaimer. Only the board president is permitted to speak on behalf of the board. So as individual board members, you're not permitted to speak on behalf of the board. And there have been several board members across the state who have been found to have violated the School Ethics Act and have been censored by the School Ethics Commission for failing to have this proper disclaimer. So while it sort of seems like maybe I'm going a little overboard by telling you, you should cut and paste this exact disclaimer. The School Ethics Commission has looked at various iterations of this and has recently determined that it really needs to include all of this in your disclaimer. So with that, the last thing you need to do Yes, Michelle?
The, you said that the board president is the only one who's allowed to make statements on behalf of the board. Are there limitations as to when he's permitted to make those statements?
So generally speaking, there aren't very many limitations. The, there is not a requirement that the board authorize or vote on the board president making a specific statement on behalf of the board. The board president is permitted to speak on behalf of the board by virtue of your policy and state law. He, he or she, well, he now, is obligated to speak accurately. And if he speaks on behalf of the board and the board has taken action that's contrary to what that statement is, then that could be problematic. But he is, it is not, there is no obligation that the board specifically authorize the board president to make a specific statement.
Okay, thank you.
Question. And yeah, I'm mincing words, I hope I can get this out, but is, is the, the voice that the board president speaks with, is that of the board? Or is the board's voice that of the president?
That's a good question. So the board is, the board president is speaking as the board. Perhaps I'm not following entirely what your question is.
Well, i- if, if, if the board president were to say, wanna paint the school yellow.
Okay.
Not consulted the rest of the board. It, does that become the voice of the board by default? Or should the board president be speaking the voice of the other nine members himself?
So the board president should be speaking the voice of the board. The board president should not be taking action that the board hasn't considered or discussed, but there are times where the board president, it's hard to answer that entirely because there are times when the board president may need to respond publicly to something before the board can sit down and and fully explore that particular issue, whatever it may be. But in general, to use your painting the building yellow example, if that issue is not something of some urgency, it has never been discussed by the board, and the board president just comes out and says, the board has decided that the building must be yellow. Well, that's, that's not proper.
You know, Carrie, I, you know, I understand it make, it makes sense, you know, like the board president is the voice of the board. Because the board is the one that elected, and we chose the board president and the vice president, correct? So what I can do is, is that in this, in this, this reorganization meeting, and also last year organization meeting, and it seems like it's past practice, that policy zero one five two is always waived. Zero one, policy zero one five two states that, you know, like the board president and the board vice president is elected by a quorum, which is like fifty plus one or whatever, it has to be like six board members, okay? So why is it that we always, and it's been past practice, waiving policy zero one five two? So when the board, you know, we're electing a board president, we're electing a voice of, of, a vice president, but it's not, it's not a quorum.
Oh, I, I can't, I can't, I don't know that I can answer that question as to why the board continues to waive policy zero one five two.
There's a reason why there's policy zero one five two, because if the board does not agree and there isn't a quorum, and we can't have a quorum when, when electing a president and vice president, and we don't come into agreement, then the counties, the county needs to intervene. So is it, is it a possibility that the reason why we're always waiving it is because we don't want the county to intervene? So is either, okay, we elect a board president, a, a, a vice president is quorum, you're the voice of the board. You represent, you represent the board. So why is it?
That's the first I've heard of that about any county interference, and I wasn't a part of waiving zero one five two in this past agenda either.
It's past practice.
Yeah, I don't know.
Could it be just because we weren't able to physically be together? Could that be the issue?
No, I, I think it, I think it's been waived because the board has always been split, and the fear is that we will not come to a quorum. And so it was a workaround, so that we would walk away from this meeting with a, a president and a vice president, rather than having to defer that to the county. That would be my impression of it, but it is past practice.
I'm not sure I'm in a position to be able to answer the question of why the board has done that in the past. The board, that is your policy. I'm not sure if it's a policy or a bylaw, but either way, the board has the right to send that policy to your policy committee and decide if there's something you want to change. If you feel like you have waived that policy consistently for many years, then perhaps it's time to take a look as a board at that policy and what that policy provides and see. Sorry, I just want to say that there is no legal requirement that your board president be elected by virtue of a majority. A plurality is the legal floor, but you have set the floor higher in your policy. You're absolutely right, Verlinda. So perhaps reviewing your policy to see if that's what you want to continue to do is the next step for the board.
But Carrie, doesn't it have to do with the fact that we're remote and that it can't be by ballot?
That was, that was so my understanding of the reason why this went on the agenda today is because it was more difficult to try to do the ballots that is in that policy. I don't know if there was another reason for why that was done in the past, but my understanding from the communications that I had was that that was done this time, specifically because with a virtual meeting, the ballots would be more difficult to address.
Last year too, but I don't know if it was done before that. I, I don't know.
Why don't we make sure, it's, this is gonna make, this discussion's gonna make it into the minutes? Why don't we make sure we take this up with the policy committee and make sure that for next year, we are all on the same page about it?
I concur.
This is the first time I can ever remember taking a vote like this. Normally it's by ballot.
Last year, we took a vote like this.
Covid, yes.
So I, I think the, the issue is more about the plurality versus the, the quorum. You know, the, the six people than it is the open ballot versus the paper ballot. Because I will say that I was not clear on, on how the policy read with the total number of votes required for a position. And when the minutes came out to say that it was a plurality, I thought that was explaining the policy, not contrary to the policy. So, so I agree with Dr. Martinez that it should go to policy, just so that we're all sure, all clear on what we want it to be for next go around. We've done it this time, and we've got our, our trust in George. So we'll go there.
I think also I, I could be wrong, but there, the parliamentary procedures under Robert's rules is pretty strict about what kind of vote should be taken and what kind of, whether you need majority or plurality. So there's, those are requirements too, and, and our attorney could speak probably better to that than I can. But I think that has something to do with Robert's Rules of Order.
Would this only come into effect if it was a five-five? If it was a tie on the vote? If it came down to five-five, where you would then need somebody to step in as the county? I mean, if you have ten people, majority would win, this wouldn't matter either way, no? Am I saying that wrong?
Of course, there's a difference, there's a slight difference between a plurality and a majority of the members who are present at a meeting. Tonight, a majority of the members of your board would require a six, of six affirmative votes to vote in your president. So it's, it's sort of an academic argument for tonight, because there were six votes for president. So regardless of whether you waived it, my count was that you had six votes for your president and six votes for your vice president. But theoretically, as you had three nominations, you could have had four, four and two. Four, four and two. So if you had four, four and two, or four, three and three, yeah, that works out better. Hold on, let me go back to that example. Four, three and three. If you had four, three and three, a plurality would be four. And the individual who received four votes could be voted in as president. So there's a difference between plurality and a majority, and you can vote in a president or a vice president based on a plurality. But your policy says majority. So I think you're, I think you're on the right path, which is if, as a board, you want to send this to your policy committee to consider whether you want to make a change. And if you don't want to make a change, then it's up to the board not to vote to waive that policy at your next meeting.
It seems that in two thousand nineteen, it wasn't a Zoom meeting, and that policy was not waived. I'm looking at the agenda right now, that policy was not waived. But it says, majority of full board is not required, only a plurality vote is needed. So in two thousand nineteen, the policy was not waived, yet we weren't following policy.
We were in, we were in person as well.
Yes, we were in person. So going back to the comment that the reason why it was waived is that because we're in Zoom. But it, what, the policy was not waived in two thousand nineteen. We were in person in the two thousand nineteen organization meeting. And in addition to that, we were not following policies. It's, it's, it stays, majority of full board is not required.
And we had paper ballots still.
And we had paper ballots. So we didn't waive it in that meeting, and then also, we weren't following policy. So can we discuss it in policy?
I think we all
I'll second that.
Policy, we can discuss it and change it if needed, and, and you know, the policy committee could discuss that further.
But I'm confused, how did we not follow policy in two thousand nineteen?
Our, our, our policy says that it should be that for everything, it's Robert's rules, which means a majority of the board, six, at least six on a ten-person board. So anytime we vote with a plurality, meaning we ju, majority rules, even if it's not six, we are going against the policy. And it appears we've done that for at least the past three years.
Even when we were in person.
Yes, regardless of ballots, regardless of in person or not in person, even before Covid. Which is why I
But in two thousand, but in two thousand nineteen, wasn't it six?
No, it, 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 it wasn't six. It was, regardless of how many people voted in the policy was, in the practice, was a plurality, not, not a majority.
Well, I would suggest that we refer to the new policy committee and let them discuss it and bring it back to the whole board.
I agree. We, we need to discuss this in policy committee.
With that, my ethics training is done for you all. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to let me know. Thank you for assisting me, Carrie, with the PowerPoint. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hey, Mr. Fernandez, I think we need to move on to citizens' comments off agenda items.
I agree. Can we move on to citizens' comments off agenda items, please?
President Fernandez, can I just make the comment that I'm very, very happy to see that there's a hundred and two people on this call? This is usually a pretty stale meeting, it's just, you know, organization meeting. But to see this much of the public interested is very hard for me.
Yes, it's eighty-five attendees and seventeen panelists, I believe. That's great.
I want more, but that's not bad.
It's a starting point, right?
Christina Ramos? Mr. After. I think you're on mute.
I think he's been elevated.
I think so.
He's there, he's on mute.
Okay, no, he's off mute. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
All right, this is off agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. I would just like the, to like to let, to let the two new board members be aware of the fact that our Board of Education sent a letter to the state monitor stating they were unhappy with him. Our state monitor has recovered over two point seven million dollars for the taxpayers of Ridgefield Park. Little Ferry, we have lost one point seven, one point four, almost three million dollars over the last eight years that we have paid for Little Ferry's tuition. If the state monitor had not stepped in, identified the problem, and helped Ridgefield Park cover that money.
Okay, maybe he'll come back. Is there another person? There is, Mr. Nisantus?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you please tell me your address?
Yes, fifteen Homestead Place, Ridgefield Park. Okay, the first thing I'd like to do is congratulate Ms. McNeil, Mrs. O'Ors, and Ricardo Martinez in, in coming back to the board. I'm sure you're all gonna do a fine job. Mrs. O'Neill will be sorely missed. And anybody who has served on the board has put their time in and, and put a lot of effort into our district and our schools. So congratulations to each of you. Look forward to you doing the job for our children. On another quick note, Mr. Fernandez, I believe that Mr. Dr. Martinez would be a excellent board president, but the board votes by majority. And congratulations, you're the board president for this year. I look forward to open discussion, and I hope that we can take it up, step up a level in terms of communication with the public, public questions, and being aware of the public's needs. Many times we speak for our children, we speak Many times we speak for our children, we speak for ourselves, and we speak for the district on a whole. And I look forward to the working with you. A couple of things, just want to be clear on, and I'll be brief. From Dr. Martinez's comments at the last meeting, the ethics complaint, was it filed by the whole board or by the board president, Mr. Gibbons?
President Fernandez, would you like me to answer that?
Sure, thank you, Carrie. Thank you.
You're welcome. It was filed by the former board president, Chris Gibbons.
Okay, then on behalf of the entire board or majority of the board?
So the Board of Education passed a resolution authorizing him to do so.
Okay, so so he wrote the yes of his complaint then, I can presume.
The ethics complaint was filed with his name on it, yes.
Because it appeared that it was ready to go at the meeting. And obviously, we drafted before. And then who would be representing the board or Mr. Gibbons as far as the ethics complaint against Dr. Bender? Who who'd be the representing attorney? Is it a special counsel or?
My office is.
Your office is. Okay. The best of my knowledge, Dr. Bender being still a employee of the district, who was paying for Dr. Bender's representation on his complaint? Wouldn't she be indemnified for legal fees under her contract?
So I'm gonna, when we respectfully stop answering the questions at this point, since she is, as you pointed out, I am still an employee of the district. And I don't want to delve into the confidential issues related to that.
Okay, I'll accept that. By the way, Ms. Right, you did a very nice job in the ethics presentation. I thought it was done well. And adding adding some real life examples only helped. Hope the board continues to take it seriously and and does their best. Just a piece of information, we've had two instances in the Board of Education where there was a five-five tie in terms of board president, vice president. The options were left to us at the time was either one would pull back their their option of being president. Or a board member could retake the vote and change their vote to have a majority. If this doesn't occur, it does go to the county superintendent. And I don't know what would happen with COVID. But there were personal interviews then with the possible candidates for superintendent for board president. And anyone else can throw their hat in. That's been my experience in the past, if it's any way of help. Whoever asked the question. All right, thank you for your time. Have a good week.
Thank you for your comment.
Dr. Mercedes Haynes.
Yes, good evening again. Dr. Mercedes Haynes, 206 Christie Street. First of all, this has been a difficult two years. And I think that our teachers in Ridgefield Park are doing an excellent job in holding it together for us. You know, as a former educator myself, I know the difficulties that they face day in and day out, the uncertainties of this virus that's continuing. And I just want to commend them all for the excellent job. You know, it takes a special person to stick it through. So but it's their passion that drives them. It's their passion that does un unremark, you know, remarkable things for our students. And I just want to say that I'm extremely proud of all of them. This question is for Dr. Haynes. No relation. Dr. Haynes, we talked about equity. And any further discussions on that? Because it's it's of great concern. You and I talked about the demographics in the town and the Latino population increasing. So what is being done, or if anything, how are we going to move forward on that?
So, and Dr. Haynes, I love saying Dr. Haynes to you. So that is, and I spoke about this last board meeting, that is our goal too. And I know you sit also on the ELL subcommittee, which I'd like to say is moving forward. I don't think it's a surprise to anybody at this board meeting that it's been a very challenging month. And I'll say that that our goals have taken a backseat in this era of the pandemic as we focus on ensuring that our students are safe and as healthy as we can make sure that they are at this time. I still would love to ask you to make an appointment with my secretary so you can come in and we can talk about the subcommittee, the work of ELL that is progressing, actually. We actually have an ELL professional development scheduled for today, and then the snowstorm hit or the ice storm hit. And that had to be postponed, but we do have ELL professional development work that's ongoing with our high school teachers that work in that. But again, I would love to speak to you in a more informal conversation. I'd love to sit, sit down on the table and just chat, if that's okay with you.
Yes, that would be fine. So and I was remiss in not saying Happy New Year to all of you because I know almost all of you on the screens. Yeah, it's here. So I know Richfield Park very in helping all students and I'm here to help. That's it.
Thank you. And you know, thank you again for your supportive words of our educators. We don't say it enough. It's challenging for everybody. So thank you because our educators need to hear it, our administrators need to hear it. Everybody is, our nurses, they are pulling their weight in heroic fashion. So thank you. And for all those who are listening in the public, the more that you can support and congratulate and share kind words with those in the schools right now, it's really appreciated and needed.
Ms. Schmidt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to first congratulate the new members to the Board of Ed. Congratulations, Ms. McNeil, Ms. O'Ors, and and Mr. Martinez again. And I'm going to be very brief. Please, all of all of the members of the board, if given the opportunity, this minute you get the opportunity, please unmask our kids. Please follow real science. Please don't follow political science. And please just put our children first in everything that you do. And that's it. I just also want to really thank the teachers right now, especially during this extremely challenging week that they're facing. And you know, best of luck to everybody. Stay healthy, stay safe in the next couple of weeks especially. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. DeSantis. You're muted.
Sorry. I'd like to welcome this person, and welcome Diane and you back Ricardo and for you all and for Linda to keep up the good work. On October 4th, you went into executive session to discuss our state monitor. In the announcement, it was stated you intended to take no action following the meeting. I'd like to know if the board took any action regarding our state monitor since the meeting. Have an answer to the question?
Carrie, is there anything we can speak on that matter?
President, I think we've mentioned this before, that the state monitor is by statute an employee of the district. So I'm going to recommend that the board not respond to questions about the fiscal monitor.
Okay, Mr. Demacore. Do you know if any action relating to you was taken after the October 4th meeting?
Do you define what you mean by action?
I don't know. Any lawsuits, any any notifications, any letters sent to anybody about you, to your bosses, to the Commissioner of Education, the county superintendent, anyone?
Answer is yes.
Okay, can you tell me the legal cost of the actions?
I don't have the legal cost. You would have to get that from the district.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gibbons has repeatedly stated that there have been ongoing investigations of Dr. Bender. I would like to know who has been conducting these investigations of Dr. Bender?
President Fernandez, I can answer that with the same answer that I've given previously. Dr. Bender is an employee of the district and the board is not permitted to answer those questions, Ms. DeSantis.
So so if it was current or former board members or current or former employees involved investigating her, you are staying covering them, I guess?
Oh, that is not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is that the board is not going to discuss personnel matters at a public meeting.
Okay, oh, okay. Okay, so how are these ongoing investigations being reported to the board?
Again, if you're asking about anything pertaining to Dr. Bender, I'm going to recommend that the board not respond. We do not discuss personnel matters publicly.
Okay, well, I guess you could answer her if she requested it, right?
Can the board speak with Dr. Bender? Is that your question?
Yeah, so she requested that information, you would you would provide it to her?
I'm I'm I can't just, I'm not going to discuss publicly any personnel matter.
Well, I think that's a simple question on whether she can be provided information on herself.
So if Dr. Bender makes a request, it will be considered duly and responded to.
Okay, the same thing with the fiscal monitor, correct?
I'm not sure what your question is, Ms. DeSantis, but again, the board is not going to discuss personnel matters about any employees in public.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was unmuting. So I have a few questions. Please, I'm sorry.
Your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 225 Euclid Avenue. So just wondering, and I apologize if this was already discussed because I joined a little bit late. But are we having this meeting by Zoom because of COVID protocols?
Can someone? Mr. Dr. Haynes, were we allowed to discuss this?
Sure, we're having this meeting because we have a number of board members who are currently COVID positive. So yes, you can say because of COVID protocols.
Thank you. I understand there are a number of teachers that are also COVID positive and a number of students. Has the board given any more consideration to going virtual at this point?
So I'll answer that too. Similar to if teachers are COVID positive or students are COVID positive, they get accommodations. And that's what we're demonstrating here with our Board of Education who has COVID positive members. So we are demonstrating the accommodations that they receive, just as we would if there were students or teachers who were COVID positive.
Yeah, that, thank you. That wasn't my question, though. My question was specifically whether or not anyone is thinking about shutting down the schools, at least for a few weeks, given the pandemic and how the numbers are rising.
We meet as an administrative team every day. We review the numbers that are currently happening in our school. And we discuss our paths forward, which are challenging. I've answered that that decision can't be made by the board, by the superintendent or by individuals in our district. That decision can only be made by our health department and approved by the county superintendent who has not given us permission at this time to do anything else other than what we're doing.
Thank you. Can can you give us the numbers, Dr. Haynes?
They're in flux right now. The best numbers I have are approximately 12% of our staff and approximately 30% of our students. That 30% of our students includes not just COVID positive and COVID quarantined. That includes students who are also out. And those are numbers that we look at daily and discuss because this is concerning to all of us. As we consider what recommendations and what path we're moving forward on.
Thank you so much. One very quick question. I think it's quick. My daughter's at the middle school and my understanding is that there's no heat. And the windows are being kept open because of COVID understandably, but there's no heat. Is that correct?
Okay, so I have not heard of this and I would please ask you to bring that to the administration of the building. And this is, this goes back to what Carrie was talking about earlier. I would like to be copied on that. That is very concerning to me.
Okay, and I'm sorry, and who who is the person I should be addressing?
To the principal of that building.
Oh, the principal. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else.
Oh, he got cut off. Is he, Mr. Raftery, you were cut off before? I don't see him here.
He hasn't been promoted.
Mr. Raftery.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes. Do you have a comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, the only thing I wanted to finish with with the new members of the Board of Ed was I'll continue with the state monitor, the money he saved us. He discovered the problem with the short billing with Little Ferry. He corrected it and he pulled us out of the He corrected it and he pulled us out of the hole. So rather than be part of the bandwagon, communicate with the state monitor, get to know him and get to know both sides of everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Raftery? You're muted.
Ingrid Raftery, 54 Euclid Avenue. Uh, I would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year first of all and also congratulate the new board members and Ms. Dr. Martinez. My question specifically as a taxpayer and as a parent is for President Fernandez. I would like to know if you pursue to go after the $1 million owed to Ridgefield Park by Little Ferry?
I believe that, that, uh, is still being litigated, I believe, Ms. Ingrid. Um, and since it's a legal matter, I still can't, I don't believe I still can talk about it.
Uh, the last time that was discussed and, and the way I remember clearly, it was said previously, not by you, that, uh, it will be addressed to the rap of Little Ferry.
Agreed, but your question to me was that, uh, would I pursue it? And that's why I answered your question that way.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, uh, can there be an update eventually or how does that work?
Uh, then I would, uh, I would, I guess I would have to forego this question to, um, our BA and, um, and, and Mr. Demikov as well.
Okay, thank you for answering and-
Thank you.
Hopefully next board meeting, uh, we hear some good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raftery.
That's about it. And I just wanted to tell, uh, the high school teachers, thank you for hanging in there. And I'm hoping that parents that I, I have to mention this because Dr. Haynes said there is some students that are out for COVID and then there are some student out. I don't know if that meant that they out ill with other, you know, flu symptoms or cold or if they just out. I'm a bit concerned that some parents are nervous and just keep their children home. And that's a concern to me because in, by working in a hospital, I had discussed it, you know, with numerous doctors, that, uh, infection control person. And they felt that it can be handled in school if it's done the proper way, children being in school. So I'm concerned that everything could maybe go back to remote. Dr. Haynes explained, that's not your decision, it comes from higher up. But it is a concern to me because I believe a lot of parents really need to speak to their pediatricians about what they feel uncomfortable with and then go from there and make good decisions. But, uh, by talking to my, uh, granddaughter, who's also legally my daughter, she said kind that gave me the impression that some students just stay home and that's a concern. So, I'm hoping, you know, that, that the parents really, uh, hear this and, you know, it's okay to be afraid, get really good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raftery.
Okay, I don't believe we have any other, um, comments from the public, so, um, Mr. Fernandez, a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, um-
We're gonna take a, a vote on the motion to adjourn. Mr. Cathcart?
Yes?
Mr. Phytros? Uh, you're muted.
Yes?
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli? I don't see him. No, I don't see him neither. And, uh, President Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, motion-
He got logged off. I'm sorry, Mrs. Grabsy. He just sent the message.
Okay, motion adjourned, um, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. Have a good night. Bye.
Congratulations.
Bye.
Congratulations again.